Makes no sense. People go unless you give people a life sentence, they're coming out of those prisons. And what are you giving them that they can hold on to for a better future?
That's right. That's right. And I, and I love it. And you said, what is it? Not a comfortable conversation. Wait a minute. What is it?
Not a normal conversation.
Not a normal conversation.
Right, right.
So let me bring it because you know, people, people, I'm, I'm with this group of brothers because I do the same thing. So prayers and everything to the Asian women that lost their life. And there was a white woman and a, and a white guy who got, who got killed too.
Right.
By a white male. Let's, let's be serious. They did it in Atlanta, which most people know is a black mecca. And until they came up with that picture, that white boy, I know some people saying, oh my, I was saying, I'll, I'll take it. I was saying, oh, please don't let this be a black man. Because I know what the backlash is in the black community when they think it's one of us that did it. It's not one of us. You know, and let's be clear, the picture that they had when they, see now I'm getting excited like you. When they arrested this white boy, he was already in a bulletproof vest. And they didn't gun him down, shoot him down, but they know he already killed, he, he already killed, you know, he, he killed. He went to three different massage parlors and killed these people. So they can come in and not be beat up, not be, you know, they can get taken for a cheeseburger and stuff and they can show up alive. I mean, let's be clear, the, the white boy that killed all those people, shot thirteen people at Mother Emanuel Church is still alive.
Yes.
Okay. George Zimmerman is still alive, but you see black people just going about their life and they're dead. Just, I'm reaching for my wallet, boom, boom, boom. You know, I was afraid for my life. So that is still happening and that is still going on. And you know, while I, okay, we're gonna have the conversation, while I really feel pain, I have, I have Filipinos, I have Chinese people, I have Japanese people. I have Cambodians in my family. They have not always been with us. Now, I know I watched on Saturday Domingos was out there supporting the Asian community as he would and as he shall. And, 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 um, you know, Leon was there in spirit, but Jacob, Father Jacob was there. I saw them. They were out there speaking, holding signs and everything, as we should when anybody is being murdered in this country. However, let's keep it real. There was a cop, there was an Asian that was holding down George Floyd when that white man was murdering him. There have been Asians that have been, let's talk about the Korean woman, you know, it was years ago, that shot one of our young girls in the head. When she accused her of stealing some stuff. How many people have gone into stores that are in our neighborhood that are run by people from the Asian community? That then they look at us like, you know, they're the colonizers, man. They're not giving back to our communities. They're not supporting our football teams. They're not supporting, they're coming in here. And I'm not saying they and us, because it's really all of us, right? That's what the colonizer does. That's what the white supremacy does. So it's not they and us, it's all of us. But let's be real, the way some people of color are treating other people of color. The Asian, Chinese and Asian parents are talking about black kids and black parents around as a damn school thing. Is just as racist as if somebody was with a hood with a, with a burning cross. So we need to have these conversations where we're, and everybody is not like that, okay? So I'm not saying we're all doing that, we're all against each other. I'm seeing the system is pitting us against each other for the same crumbs. Instead of going for the loaf that all of us are working and dying for. So we gonna have them conversation and call some of our people. It's like, yo, you want me to stand next to you now because sixty of you all have been murdered? But where was you when we were getting killed? Where were you? Where were you when you should have been checking your community when they were killing us too?
But our lives don't matter until black lives matter.
Come on, come on, sis.
So until that happens, this will continue to be a great division. And this is why I say to people like Father Jacob, to people like Mr. Thomas, to people like Domingos De Rosa. Who is very vocal about the things that are happening in the community that should not be happening. Um, it's time for us to stand up. Let's stop taking a seat. Let's be like Rosa Parks and get on the bus and sit in the front where we belong. That's where we belong.
Listen, I'd rather be like Harriet Tubman. It's like you can sit in the plantation if you want to, but I is gonna be free.
Amen. Amen. As now I see Mr. and Sharon, thank you for your input. Now Leon, I see you with your hand up. Are you still with us?
I, I just want to add a little bit about what, you know, what Saturday's event was about and, you know, you know, stop black, uh, excuse me, stop Asian hate. Uh, it, it was a, you know, nationwide movement on Saturday that the Asian, Asian American community, uh, was looking for support. You know, I have relatives who, who their mothers are Asian.
Right.
And, you know, for me to support them, I had to be there.
Right.
To support my neighbors, I had to be there. My neighbors are Asian. I, I, I have, uh, uh, a few neighbors who are Asian. And we talk about a whole bunch of stuff. And this is one of the conversations. Yo, how come you don't like black people? Huh? I said, why is that? And he's like, not me. My grandfather.
Right.
They, they made us dislike you guys. I'm like, what are you talking about? My grandfather would tell us the same thing my father would tell me. And I was like, that must be a norm that everyone tells their children, don't bring a black friend home. I didn't understand that as a kid.
But that's just like every black parent saying that they, their kids shouldn't trust anybody because we honestly don't know who to trust. It's time for that type of narrative to change. It's time.
You gotta have those conversations.
Right. And that's.
It has to start somewhere.
And, and, and it has to honestly. And this is why I bring you guys to this platform, because I need people to see who you are. See what you stand for, watch how you work before they go out and vote in September. It is imperative that we do this. Leon has a question. Leon, can you take yourself off mute? I'm sorry about that.
Don't worry. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I, I just wanted to give a quick background on, you know, how I know Domingos, how I met Domingos. Um, I've been friends with Domingos for a little over five years now. Uh, I met him by Clifford Park when that park was started to get, you know, filled up with a bunch of needles. And a bunch of feces and all this stuff. And that time till now. Um, Domingos has been consistent with, you know, water and our BPS schools to holding, you know, elected officials accountable.
Right.
Uh, because of the officials accountable regardless of their color.
Right.
And that's something that we do here in Boston. We give a lot of our people a pass even when they're not doing their job. So I, you know, it, it's been, it, I see Domingos and thinking of him, you know, in that space. This is why we're running, because we're tired of the regular politics, you know? And again, it's not, we're not talking about, um, packages or, you know, we're talking about our children's. Our children being exposed to discarded needles, poor education. Right now, for example, you know, our schools are crumbling and we're, we're ready, we're getting ready to return our kids to school.
Right.
And we don't even have proper ventilation for that. So, and those are conversations that a lot, unfortunately, a lot of elected officials now don't want to have. But again, these are our children, these are our families, these are our environment, you know? And I'm just proud to see him here. And again, I know Stacy had asked earlier, like, hey, you know, what are your beliefs? I've seen Domingos, like I tell you, from a little over five years ago. He hasn't changed. And you probably can agree with me, you know, he's been consistent with the messaging, his platform. Um, new issues that arise, like every year we get some new issues out here. And he's always on the side of the people. So I'm excited to, to, you know, see him here. I'm, I'm excited too to run as well, because I believe it is up to us to be the change that we want to see in our communities.
Absolutely.
I know Domingos is frustrated as well. Uh, we've sat for the past year with almost every elected official in Boston in regards to, you know, public safety.
Right.
Um, homelessness, you know, the opioids, and we're just tired of it. So again, kudos to you, Dee, you know, and Jacob as well. Jacob has jumped on as well. And, you know, he's running in Maripan.
Yes.
But it's beautiful to see the connection that we all have, because we might have different point of views on certain things. But we all have that common ground where it's, we want, we want better for all of us, you know, for all of us in the community. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
And, and Leon, I, I appreciate that. Um, I didn't know that.
So I love your energy. I love, this is great programming.
Thank you. You know what I have to say to you, Leon? Um, I apologize. I didn't know you were running for District Seven. Um, and let me be honest, and this is another thing, I don't even know where District Seven is. And this is why it's time for us to get educated. A lot of people won't admit that they don't know where District Seven is. I don't.
And, and that's part of our platform.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That's part of. You're breaking up, Lee.
I just, yeah, I, I can't hear him.
So that's, that's a part of the platform.
Right.
Educate the community and let them understand that you actually have five counselors per district.
Right.
We're at large. Well, our, you know, our community, elected officials fought because.
You're breaking up, Leon, if you can hear us.
I think he, I think he's on mute there. I think he's on mute. Uh, Father Jacob, you have a question. And by the way, Jacob, how old are you?
Think about it. Usually, we talk about life lessons time, you know. Can you guys hear me now?
No. Okay. Father Jacob, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. What were you saying?
I said, it was, uh, was on its way. I'm twenty-three years young.
Yes, exactly. Thank you. Thank you, young man, for taking the time out of your life to run for District Four, as I told Nikia Jean Charles, who's only eighteen years old. Running for a seat in Boston City Council. When I see people like Domingos, when I see people like you, when I see people like Leon running for these seats. I immediately think of your parents, because I know that everything starts in the home and what you see from your elders. And then there, it progresses. So I'm gonna shout your parents out and say thank you for what they gave you. So that you can pass this on in your community until the next generation. I know Domingos is Cape Verdean, so I know. His, his parents, uh, came over here and he came over at a young age. And for him to be fighting for his community, I'm sure a lot of people are like, well, how is this his community? He's, he is the community. I'm the community. Mr. Thomas is the community. Jacob is the community. And even if you guys don't get seats in this off, in this office, I pray to God that you still come together and do community work. Because it doesn't stop just because you don't get the seat this time around. We have to keep going to build a better community for black and brown people. It doesn't mean build more prisons. It means build each other up so that we can't be torn down so easily. Because this is our biggest problem. Because of slavery and all the other things that came before us, we retreat way too easily. Or we come out swinging because we've been taught to fight. Let's use something different to fight. Let's use people like Domingos to fight our battles. Let's come together and use people like Father Jacob, or use people like Mr. Thomas who can get you into a trade. Or use people like Sharon who, if you want to ask a question and you don't know how to go about it, then you can get her, write it down and send it to her and say, hey, can you ask this at your next meeting? We have to come together and do something different. Let's stop whispering at our kitchen table or having pillow talk with our fiance or our husband or our boyfriend about what we think about the candidates. Because to be honest with you, Domingo De Rosa actually does have my hope, because I've been watching him in the thick of the community. I've watched him go on his live and exchange, at the needle exchange and show people the way that. The people that are getting their methadone are being treated and how they don't care about us. And how some people don't always want to be on methadone, but it's their last hope to become clean. He went, traded needles. He went back up as the same person and traded. He, they weren't supposed to give him more needles. They gave it to him anyways. He said, watch this, you guys. And he's, he did, he said, can I get a number one? Which means that he had already been there prior, but the guy didn't care. He wanted him out of his face. So he gave him some more needles, which he was not supposed to do. I was flabbergasted that this was happening.
The, the system is broken. The needle exchange is broken. It's a nineteen ninety-one city ordinance. That needs to be revisited and rewritten to accommodate today's needs. There's nowhere in the world that these individuals are allowed to give out thousands of needles. And on the back end of it, there's no exchange. I understand that you're trying to help keep, you know, the levels of transmitted disease.
Right.
But those levels are going up.
Right.
The amount of overdoses are going up.
Yes.
Everything that's being done in the city of Boston around mass and cash does not work. We have the.
Can I, can I? Can I say something that's very important?
Sure, Mr. Thomas, but I have.
Folks, to focus on Domingos De Rosa for City Council at Large. Like I was saying earlier on, and it's very important, we have had over eight plus billion in new construction the last fifteen years.
Yes.
We have one candidate that has stood up because the construction industry is the key to the middle class. When you have individuals that are coming from New Hampshire, Maine, New York, Connecticut, Rhode Island. And people right here are not working making over thirty-plus dollars an hour.
Right.
There's a candidate and more that will stand and make sure, instead of your kids going to prison or turning to the streets. Fight for you to get those high-paying jobs with those good wages. Think about that, folks, who is ever listening. If you want a reason, think about who has fought for you from all that money to now. Here is candidates, now there's three. That will fight for those things for you. The last thing I will say, Sister Queen, I would like to talk to you off script.
Okay. You can message me. It's fine. I'm, I'm very accessible. Ask Domingos. Sometimes I call him four, five o'clock in the morning thinking he's Jacob. The early bird catches the worm. Hey, I'm with it.
I will have him send you your, um, send me your information.
He can send, yes, he can send you my information, but I see that Father Jacob has his hand up. But come on, come on, youngin'. Come on and tell us what you're, what you're talking about.
No, I was just gonna recap from, uh, Domingos and my appearance at the Stop, uh, Asian Hate Rally on Saturday. It was very refreshing. Um, a lot of the points that Sharon highlighted earlier, many of the organizers there highlighted as well. Uh, this rally was led by an eighteen-year-old organizer, uh, college student from North, from Harvard, from Harvard.
Right.
Uh, and, and when they were sharing their words, they, you know, they spoke to the Asian American crowd and said, hey. We have had a history of aligning with the wrong people. We do not have white privilege. We need to align with our black and brown brothers and sisters. And they even made a notion to bring up Breonna Taylor's anniversary, because they said enough is enough. We need to stop this, uh, conversation that we have white privilege, where we are, ourselves are also second-class citizens who are pushed aside by, um, those people in power. And so, um, we have a, a young shift going on here. We have a shift, we have an opportunity in Boston. To really direct the city in a very wholesome, direct political avenue.
Right.
But it's gonna take, taking those gatekeepers out of the way. Taking those people who don't want these changes, who have been in power for twenty, thirty years, um, that they might look like me and you. They might be black and brown as well.
Right.
And themselves might be gatekeepers. And we have to understand as a people that we do not ask for freedom from our oppressors. The only freedom our oppressors know is the freedom that they get by oppressing others. We need a new type of freedom. And that means be, building an entirely new table. And that's what Domingos and all of us are really trying to do. We don't want a seat at the table. That table is corrupt. It's been corrupt twenty, thirty, forty years.
You better build your own table. This guy right here does construction. He can build the table, him and Mr. Thomas. Build some chairs and you guys come and take a seat. Just make sure you invite me, because I want to eat too. Hello. That's it. That's just it.
That's what we need to do. That is the reality of where Boston is going, and it's gonna take those bold, unapologetic people. That's why people tell, used to tell me, Domingos, you, you have to be careful the way he talks. No, go ahead, Domingos, speak even louder. Let me get you two, three bullhorns so the people in the back can hear you.
He doesn't need a bullhorn.
They're not listening. So.
Oh, they're listening. They're listening. They're just picking up on the negative. Because actually, the reason why I reached out to him was because of the fact that this thing had happened at Charlie Baker's house. I'm not gonna lie, I thought it was genius of him to do this. And I thought it was funny. Because I was like the nerve of this guy, and I have to get him on the show, because I need to know. Who would be bold enough besides me, if I wasn't on paper, to do what he did? That was a bold move, and it was also speaking volumes to the lack of understanding that the governor and his wife has for the demonstration that was led by Domingos. To say, I'm not trying to harm you, but what is happening in our community is harming our children, and I'm just showing you what they see. I'm not here to harm you. I actually put these orange cones up, which means stop, which means alert, which means there's something going on. To let you know, don't come past those cones, because there is something here that could harm you. Our kids don't have that. We go into a park with our kids. Wait, we go into a park with our kids, and then some of the kids end up getting pricked by needles that have been used. And this is what we have to deal with. So Charlie Baker, I don't have any sympathy for the fact that this guy showed up on your door. And the Boston police told him it was okay to put him down as long as the cones were there. And then he gets the stay-away order. Isn't that something?
Well, you know, we don't have twelve state police officers.
Yeah, go ahead, Domingos.
We don't have, we don't have twelve state police officers. We don't have a detail in front of our house, you know? There's an array, there was an array of reasons why, you know, the group decided, it was a group activity, right? We was demonstrating our First Amendment rights as a group.
Right.
Um, again, you know, I do antagonize our, you know, mayor.
I know.
And, and the governor, because you know, these are the people who were in power to make. As quick as he swiftest pen, we turned the convention center into, into a makeshift hospital. As quick as he swiftest pen, uh, we did that across the state of Massachusetts to, to deal with the COVID pandemic. Um, this opioid pandemic is a state, national, it's a city, state and national pandemic. It's not just a Boston issue.
Right.
Um, our, our neighbors in Lowell are dying by the drones. Um, homelessness in the Merrimack Valley has created the Merrimack Valley as a dumping ground for needles, along with other things. They just pulled a body out of the river, uh, a few days ago of a black man who was being, I guess, chased by police officers, and he jumped into the river. They said he jumped into the river. Some folk says he didn't jump into the river. So, you know, that's another conversation. But the real reality is, um, you know, big bank takes little bank. And as a politician, you know, the ones who raise the funds, uh, and if you track the money, you'll see whose agenda they really backing.
Right.
I, I refuse to take my neighbor's money, knowing she has three children going through a pandemic. I refuse to take money from an elder who needs it to get by for the week. But I will ask you for a share. I will ask you for a like. I will ask you for a repost. Because for me, I'm using what's available to us.
Right.
That we can be intuitive. There's too much technology in front of us to take away one piece and not add to the other.
Absolutely.
I wasn't allowed into a forum because I didn't have ten thousand dollars in my bank account at Office of Financing Campaign.
Wow.
I get attacked by a white lady during a forum, and then I get an invite to the next one.
Again, everybody, it, it's time for us to look at the people on this panel, the three young men that are on this panel. That are running for Boston City Council, District Four, District Seven, and Boston City Council at Large. This won't be the, the last time you see these three men on my platform, but more importantly, it won't be the last time you see Domingos on this platform. I believe that like presidents have debates. I think that Boston City Councilmen should have debates too, where we come in and we ask questions so that we can be informed about what your agenda is. Nothing should be hidden, and then we can make the right decision for the community. Not just me, not just you, but for everybody, because it's gonna work for everybody. So Domingos, I thank you for sharing your voice. I thank you for the community work that you do. I thank you for having a big mouth. I'm not even gonna front and act like I, I'm not, I thank you for that. Because without that, um, I think that our greatest challenge would be that people don't speak loud enough. And people don't speak up enough for the things that need to happen for black and brown people to finally come out on top and stop, and start winning. Because the reason why we're not winning is because I don't think we're using the right, um, weapons. I don't think that we're equipped with the right weapons. And I think that if we vote for somebody like you, or somebody like Father Jacob, or somebody like Leon, or somebody like. Uh, Nick, Nikia, uh, Jean Charles, or Joel Richards. We have a chance to come on, come out on top finally. It's about time. It's our time. It's our time to shine. It's our time to grow, and it's our time to grow. It's our time.
It definitely is. And, you know, the greatest thing about democracy is the fact that we can continue to grow, right? It's our choice. We can get involved because it's our choice.
Yes.
But in, in our community, we're not, we're not pulling up the next generation with us.
Absolutely.
You know, my twenty-two-year-old can care less about politics.
Yes.
Be more interested in how many likes it gets on YouTube. You know, how, how, what was the next, you know, PlayStation fifty-nine is coming out.
Right.
And we have to change that.
We have to educate our children. Yes, yes, yes.
Civics in our classrooms.
Yes.
You need certain things to be put.
Yes.
My kids go to school in Concord. They have civics.
But see, that's the problem.
They have a student body.
But that's the problem, Domingos. Why does your kids have to be bused to Concord to get a proper education? Why isn't there a school in your district that has the books and, and the, the teachers and access to counseling and all those?
You sound like me right now.
So why do I, I went to Mecca growing up until I got kicked out, but why do I have to go to Mecca and be bussed out to a school in Cohasset? Which was a couple of towns over from where I actually lived to get a good education? And why was it that it was just like maybe ten, so all black people don't deserve to have a good education? We gotta have a lottery to see who goes to Newton High or Newton North, or who goes to Cohasset High School? Like, how does this system work? It is failing us, and we're allowing that to happen by not speaking to the people who are trying to go in and elect an office. That's all I'm saying, because I guarantee you, Domingos, if you did what you did at Charlie Baker's house, at, uh, DA Rollins' house. Uh, she would have been about that life, but I promise you, you wouldn't have gotten enough people to say that that was the wrong thing for you to do. Because she's also a woman, she's a minority, and she's a progressive DA. So no one would have been saying anything about if you did that in front of her house. So again, I say this, it's time for us to stand up and stop sitting on our hands or going like this and then, or going like this, or going like this.
Hear no evil, hear no evil, speak no evil.
It's just not gonna work anymore. I thank you all for joining us on this platform tonight. Um, Domingo De Rosa is running for Boston City Council, City at Large. Um, Father Jacob is running for District Four. Leon, Leon Rivera is running for District Seven. And all of these guys have a campaign. If they have websites, please, you guys post your website on the live right now so that people can know how to reach out to you. Because again, if you're saying you don't mind accountability, and you have this campaign that says you're gonna do X, Y, and Z. Expect somebody like me to hold you accountable to what you said. And if you can't do it, let us know why it's not happening. Because I know there's plenty of roadblocks, there's gonna be plenty of other people that are higher up that are gonna try to block what you're doing, because they still don't want us to succeed. Because you're right, it's all about money. That's what it's always been about. So I thank you guys for being on this platform, Domingos. I'll see you very soon, Father Jacob.
Thanks for having me.
Always, always. Father Jacob, I look forward to having you on the platform to share your campaign with us. Leon Rivera, please join me on my platform to share your campaign with us so that we can know who you are, what you stand for, where you come from. What you eat for dinner, how you fry or, or bake your steak.
I got it, I got it.
We gotta know all of that, because you know what? It's time for us to know you and be transparent, because that's just what it is.
Hey, come have dinner, come have dinner with us on the Mile on Friday nights, five thirty. We'll be down there. We actually be down there a few days this week. Uh, the weather's breaking, so we're trying to get people into real services. We want to make sure that, uh, people get connected. Uh, for folks that don't know, Shattuck Hospital will be moving to BMC in the next, uh, three years. They're working on the building now, that construction you see going on now at the old state building. Then that's gonna be the new Shattuck Hospital. Uh, they're opening twenty twenty-four, for folks that know. This is why we gotta get involved, because they're taking our community from under us. And the folks who are sitting in office are just listening to the conversation, not even speaking.
You know, I have one funny thing to end with before we, we turn for the night. So you know how when Charlie Baker does his update in the afternoon? And, you know, there's a person doing sign language up there or whatever. I wish there was someone up there telling us something different and not what the heck he's talking about. Because I just feel like, I just would not even, if I, I, I just want to see something different.
So you're saying you want him to speak in sign language and her tell us something different?
Right, something. Let something be different. I just keep hearing the same blah, blah, blah. And I don't see enough things happening. I see that, you know, communities are starting to open back up. While this pandemic hasn't slowed down one bit, there's another variant. But of course, Charlie Baker did vote for Donald Trump, and so he is about the almighty dollar. So him opening up is not about keeping us safe. He doesn't care if we die or not. He wants our money. That's what he's on board with. So we have to get it together and stop supporting communities that are not supporting us. Stop supporting people that are not supporting you. Stop supporting people that you can't sit down and break bread with. If you can't be invited to the cookout, don't vote for them. That's just all I have to say. Just don't vote for them. If you can't be invited to sit down at the table and, and dine with them and break bread with them and talk to them and be transparent with them.
I'll be on the grill.
Exactly.
I'll be on the grill.
Because they're not about community. They're about politics and they're about money. And our black and brown communities, we need more money in the community so that we can survive and thrive.
Eight dollars versus two hundred and seventy-six.
Yes.
And we got two-point-two billion in, I mean, I can go on and on and on and on.
We know. We know. I'm gonna let you guys go. I thank you for joining Not Your Normal Conversation. I thank you for your comments. Stacy Borden, shout out to Stacy Borden, shout out to Andrea James, shout out to Wayne Lane, shout out to everybody that is trying to make a difference in the community. Um, Jamal, uh, Williams. There's a lot of people, black businesses, that are trying to make a difference in the community any way that they can. And just to let you guys know, I plan to do a Mother's Day brunch for, um, I know that, you know, we're in the midst of COVID. But I would like to do something where we can be on Zoom, where we can, um, appreciate the women who are in domestic violence shelters. That can show them success stories, that can make them see something different. Um, maybe we can have lunch delivered to their places and some flowers delivered to them while we're sharing our strength and hope with them. Because it's a time of healing for our community. So I'm trying to look into what shelters I would have involved in this. And how I can make it work during the pandemic. But I think it's time we start appreciating and loving on our people, because we need that. We need mouth-to-mouth resuscitation so that we can come back to life finally. Again, you guys, I thank you for joining Not Your Con, Con, Not Your Normal Conversation. I hope to see you next week for our next show. Everybody stay blessed, stay safe. I thank you guys for being on this platform, and everybody. Everybody stay blessed, stay safe. I thank you guys for being on this platform. And everybody have a blessed evening.
Good night.